So to kind of summarize, I think that you or your staff would want to be involved in developing the scope and what it costs to design that scope. If I'm a consulting engineer and you leave something out of your request for proposal and so will I, I don't have much choice if I'm going to compete low bid with others. If consulting engineer didn't expect it, then you can, of course, expect it to cost more and perhaps take more time. And when you write the scope, the city staff or whoever writes a scope, we need to have a sewer from here over to here, then all I'm responsible for is price because you haven't told me that I have to come up with a scope. So my -- you guys hand these out, I appreciate it. So where I come from, and I'll be ready to respond to your questions, is why you wouldn't want to, why wouldn't you want to be involved in developing exact scope of work and then be able to negotiate the cost of doing exactly what that work is that you've negotiated? And I want to take just a minute to take a look at these two deliberate cartoons. I'm almost going to read through them because I want you to get the gist of them. The top one, fellow says, "I need a budget estimate for my project, but I don't have a scope or a design." Okay, my estimate is three and a half million. And the answer is, "You don't know anything about my project," and that makes two of us. So that's kind of what you can encounter. And at the bottom there, suppose the project's already underway and this project is twice as much as your bid. And the answer, of course, is, "You wouldn't have given us a job if we'd told you how much it was really going to cost." And, of course, if that makes you feel any better, all of the other bidders lie too, we're just better at it. Sort of maybe drives home the point. That's enough said about the pros and cons. Let's turn to any questions or discussion that you might have. Thanks for your time.
The qualifications in low bid, and you called that the sealed envelope? Are these the only three ways that we can go about this?
Well, some version of those are probably the only, or some combination of those general types of approaches. I'm not aware of other methods. I'm sure they're a combination. I'm sure there are lots of things that have been tried.
Could we, and I don't even know if for engineering services, if this makes sense, but could you look at a contract that would be valued for a year and you'd basically contract with an engineering firm and say, "Anytime a project comes up, it's going to be this cost per unit," or what have you, and then you're still intimately working with that firm to develop the scope, but you kind of have this yearly contract instead of a per-project contract?
On-call.
Yeah, on-call, term-of-supply contract. You know, we've always talked about doing that. Problem is, we don't, at this point, we don't have that much work.
Okay.
A lot of times, though, we do need help on on-call. I know on traffic engineering, we're still using HDR because we brought them in with the transportation master plan. But, you know, those are usually very, very small services, like under $5,000. So that's a little easier.
Okay.
But now, if we were busier, that's the way to go, is to have an on-call for the various services.
And then you negotiate, typically, you negotiate the overhead and the hourly wages.
Right, and then you just know what it is going to be.
Yeah, what scale of workers they're going to have involved in it.
The qualifications in low bid, I mean, does that involve a request for qualifications in advance? And then you take just the most qualified companies and have them bid?
Typically, the way that works is, we, a lot of times, will just do a request for proposals, and included in that is their qualifications. So you're reviewing it based on how, what's your approach? What's your qualifications? Then if you were to follow the sealed envelope method, then only the shortlisted firms going into an interview would submit that cost. So it's just the shortlisted bunch that does that.
So would you, so let's just say there were six firms that, let's say that was our process, and there were six firms that were, I don't know, qualified or what have you. Would you go through and design a scope with all six of them in mind and then determine the top three qualified and say, "Give us a cost," or how would that interaction occur?
The way that's typically done is, what you do is, you have the staff in the RFP lays out, "This is what we want." Okay, then they will submit a cost. It's, number one, it's only the shortlisted firms. So if you had six total respondents, the three top firms would then be asked to develop a cost based on their understanding of the scope that staff has presented. There's no give and take or anything. It's just they do it blind, they're seeing different things. And then you would go through the interviews, rate them based on the interview, so you'd have a subjective interview rating. And then there would be a cost component thrown in. When that's concluded, you prorate it. If you have 10 points for that, then the cheapest guy gets 10 points. The next guy, if he's, like, if the low cost is 50 and the high cost is 100, you prorate it, he gets five points. And that's how it works. Sometimes you have unintended consequences. When we were doing this, you know, between '03 and '07, probably one of the best cases of the unintended consequence of this was the North West Station. Well, when we went into our scope, we presented it, we were not, we didn't feel we needed a detention tank. Well, when we went through the interview process, two of the three shortlisted firms we interviewed was, says, "You've got to have it." And submitted a cost based on their understanding and based on their recommendations. The third fellow followed our scope to the latter, which was, as it turned out, flawed, gave us a price based on doing it without the tank. By the time we added the tank back in, when it was demonstrated, yes, we really did, the final cost for them was probably more than we would have had we followed a straight negotiated process without cost at all. So, and there have been several other times where we followed this process, and the award recommendation was not the cheapest guy, but still following the process. But I think, as Dave pointed out, Tim's worked on both sides of this fence, and the problem you run into is the fact that, what is the scope? Well, what we're presenting is a general, more of an in-product spec. The consultant is the one that's going to have to figure out all the steps it's going to take to get from start to finish and price it based on that. And all these guys will have different methodologies, and so if you're trying to look at costs, it's all going to be different. And as David pointed out, some guys are going to be maybe cutting a little tighter. Some folks wouldn't even want to talk to you, but you really don't know what you've got. Since scope, in engineering or any professional service for that matter, is best determined when you work together, come up with a final scope. A good case in point would be for our stormwater master plan. We came into it and ultimately, the group that we worked with said, "You know, I think you need to come in on a two-phase approach because there's all sorts of different ways we can go. We wouldn't even recommend entering into a contract to do the entire project. Let's do a two-phase approach. Let's do a scoping phase first. Once we get through that and we agree on what we need to do for the final, we'll negotiate and do the second phase and finish it." Another classic example of this, much smaller cost, was the stormwater work with, excuse me, wastewater work at the plant. We just hired Burns &amp; McDonald. We came in, we had three fine firms. Two of them presented a recommendation to talk about, "We can expand your plant to meet, you know, your needs to," because you're approaching the 80% we were just talking about. The Burns &amp; Mc, that folks came in and their interview, they said, "Look, we may be shooting ourselves in the foot for a fee, but in review of your data, you don't need to expand it, and we can prove it, and here's how." And so by a result of just going in and basing it on interview and scope, we were able to actually come up with a very good product. So I think that's one of the major benefits of this process, is you can work with professionals, you can gain benefit of their expertise and knowledge, and come up with something that works for us. And as David said, the, you know, this engineering is the 10% of the cost of the project. So maybe you pay another 10% of that, that's still 1% of the project cost, and maybe you'll save it down the line.
I guess I'm not sure, I don't understand why you can't ask those questions upfront and have the interview process and, you know, glean the best information from all the respondents in more of, I guess, an RFI. I mean, do you issue those? Or, and why, after getting the best solution, after talking to two or three different people, why then you can't put those ideas together and say, "Okay, this is obviously the best solution, now let's go out and get the bids." What methodology, where would that fall into this matrix? Is that, you see what I'm saying? I mean, that's how I would do it if I were, you know, doing a homeowner project. I'd call people up, I'd have them come out. You know, they'd give me the cost to do whatever it is I said I wanted it done. And then some of them would say, "Why do you want this done?" And I'd say, "Well, I just thought I had to have that component." "Well, no, you don't have to have that done." That could be, you know, it'd be like replacing an HVAC system in your house. You know, maybe I said, "Hey, I need a new air conditioner. You know, let's, give me a quote for both the air and the heat." And the first guy comes out and does just that. The second guy comes out and says, "Well, why would you want to replace the heater? This thing's got another 10 years left in it. And besides, we can always match it to the new unit on the air, you know, the air conditioner." And then the third guy comes up with an even better idea and says, "Instead of doing this, let's put a heat pump in there, keep the old heater, and now you've got, you know, a cheaper heating source to begin with." You see what I'm saying? I mean, then you can go back later and say, "Well, this guy gave me great advice. Now let's change the scope of the work and say, 'Now, based on the new information, here's what I want.'" I mean, a heat pump and keep the backup heat source as the furnace and replace it when it goes out. I mean, I guess what I'm having a hard time understanding is, do you do things differently than what I just proposed?
I'd be concerned from that guard that our reputation would be solid with some of these firms. If we keep going to them and asking for project recommendations, and then we use their ideas to go to other companies again through the entire bid process, they're going to stop submitting their information. And we won't end up working with the best firms.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear from David, but is that what you're?
I think Mr. Freeman stated exactly what I was going to say. I mean, you start shopping things around, people say, "You know, I don't want to mess with these guys." And also, you know, you're trying to kind of come up, you know, once again, you're dealing with parts. You know, you're not dealing with intellectual property, you're dealing with a heat pump. You're dealing with, you're dealing with components. And you know, if the word came out, fortunately, us homeowners don't, we could get away with it because we're not out on the market all the time, replacing our AC all the time. I mean, if the word got out and they said, "Oh, yeah, this guy's a big landowner and he's going to shop me around," you're going, you know, the individual would start suffering too, because they'd say, "I don't want to talk to you because you're going to take my ideas and you're going to shop it out to this next guy."
I mean, but that's just sales, isn't it? I mean, a lot of times, that's still just what you do.
Now, professional business, that's just not how it's done. They're right, you really, let me rephrase this. Let me start from scratch. If there's something that we can spec, we'll bid it. If we're going to build an outbuilding and we know it needs to be 30 by 40 and we know that the materials just need to be water-resistant, we can put that down on a bid sheet and say, "Give us your best price." What we do with professional services is, we say, "We have this issue. We have this problem. Give us your best advice on how to solve it." If it's a wastewater issue, one side might say, "Well, we'll use ultraviolet and trenches." The other side says, "Well, we're going to use chlorine and basins." Those are two totally different approaches, totally different costs, but they both perhaps get you to the same place, which is a solution to your problem. You want that flexibility. You want the flexibility to negotiate once you get towards the kind of solution that you want. It's competitive, and it's the way business is done in the world, and I think it gives you the best value. For example, you could have a, "We love your approach," and then you open the cost envelope and it's double of the second person. You say, "We just can't, we just can't go that far. We like your approach, you're the number-one firm, but your price is so far out of our range, we can't consider you." So you have an opportunity to negotiate. If they say no, then you go to the second firm and say, "You know what? You're the second firm, the first firm had these extra things. Could you come closer to that and give us a good price? Now you're getting the best value for your dollar." That's how business is done on major, complex issues. We're not talking about specking something that we can part out or something that we could put down on a bid sheet. If you're going to buy a truck, you can say, "V6, four-wheel drive with a plow." You're done. But if you're talking about, "We have a problem. We'd like your best ideas on a solution," that can mean a variety of different approaches with a variety of different solutions, and then we're able to select what we believe is the best one and then negotiate the best price.
But it says from 2003 to 2007 that Johnson County, well, we used the same QBS and low bid that Johnson County did, right?
We did.
Is that what you proposed when you were at Johnson County?
Actually, I did, and it worked very well.
So qualifications plus low bid?
Well, qualifications plus an envelope that was about 10 of 100 points.
So would you recommend that here?
I would recommend some hybrid, some solution that the council was comfortable with, that includes qualifications and a price component. How much weight you put on that price component, how much that enters into the idea and the negotiation is something you all end up deciding. We felt that 10% was price. And if a price that, like David said, was high and they got the lowest number of points, and then some other firm went above them, then sometimes that's the best answer. Sometimes it isn't, and you try to negotiate price and say, "Could you bring your price down closer to what the second party has done? Because we like your concept, we like your ideas, we like your approach better, but your price is too high." It gives you the maximum flexibility for value.
But that's not what David's proposing. He's proposing all QBS only, right?
Right, and the, you know, as I say, we followed the Johnson County method until we started getting into these very complex projects. And I have to admit, I'm fairly, at one point, I thought, if I've got two equal guys, then I go, you know, what's the difference? But the thing is, the problem I see, and I, the sealed envelope method, the downside with it, once again, you do interject price. What are they basing that price on? Because it's a different thing. I mean, everybody's going to have their own concept, but if you're rating it, it's not, as David said, as I say, it's not apples to apples. It's not like you're saying, "I want 500 feet of asphalt put right here." It's, you know, that's more quantifiable. So I think, you know, though the sealed envelope is a way to do it, I think the QBS straight quality-based selection is probably still, I don't know if you're gaining that much with the sealed envelope. It is a way to do it, it is done. With some of the more complex projects we've had that are, once again, go back to the master plans for both stormwater and transportation, those were so wide open, I don't know how you price it until you sit down and get a detailed scope.
Isn't some of this incumbent upon city staff? If we were to do a qualification-plus-low-bid system to make a determination what they're going to recommend? Certainly, there might be a low price, but, you know, based on your understanding of the particular contractors, their ideas. I mean, you can come to council and say, "This was the low bid. This is what our recommendation is. This is why it's our recommendation."
And during the period where we were following that fairly rigorously, we had the one instance with the lift station where it was a huge disparity. Essentially, they bought the pot. There were several other occasions, I went and reviewed some of the records. There was at least two indications I pulled up when I was reviewing some of the computer files. I mean, the low bid was half of what we recommended. And, you know, the recommendation was taken. I think when you get back to interjecting, it can be done. But once again, if you do start asking for price, you may lose some people. And I don't know if you're gating that much. Because if the price is too high, we'll move and go to the next guy. It's kind of a, once again, it's a variant of the Johnson County method, which I've worked under for years. In fact, I called the Johnson County purchasing folks and said, "Send me your data." And we started using it. It was only when we got to these master plans that we kind of drifted away from, because it just didn't seem to be working on some of those things. But, you know, if the price is too high, we're going to say, "I can't deal with that," because we know how much we want to spend. And, you know, if there's some, well, a good case recently, the contract with HDR for the Light Drive Sewer. I think our estimate for engineering was around $200,000. We had a, as roughly, we pulled 15% of the estimated construction cost, and it came in at 63. And, you know, that was without a requested price. That was the number they presented to us. We don't wait a minute. This is, you know, firstly, I think, "Is this even real?" But it was. A competent firm submitted a good price. I just, I mean, like Dave said, I have been on both sides of this. And we actually even had, I've had experiences where asked for a price was generally the firms that we just would not even respond to. But if we did, you know, I could save, there were a couple instances where we could say, "Well, you know, we've got an idea where we could save some construction money, but it's going to cost more from an engineering standpoint. Well, we're not going to put that in our proposal because it's going to raise our fee and we're not going to win the job." So you've completely lost the incentive to come up with those kind of innovations and ideas. And back to your point, I think some of what you're talking about is actually is part of the QBS process, where you're asking different consultants, you know, show, you know, come up with ideas and show them to me. Now, the difference is, when we go through this process, when somebody ends up with a great idea, we select them based on that idea. And then we negotiate. And I've been around long enough, Dave has too, that feel like, you know, we can negotiate contracts. And, you know, could we've got it for maybe 10% less? But again, we're talking, design contracts use like 10% of construction. That's a small price to pay for possible errors or even additional construction costs. And from what I've seen too, you'll get, you'll get high bids on plans that just aren't as clear. Now, they may not have mistakes, but if they aren't done with the same care, they can result in higher construction costs. So that's really where the bulk of the money is, is in construction, not in the design process.
You know, I, another example of, you know, maybe the process, you know, needs to be more proactive. I don't know how much of the work is bid out with, you know, published RFQs or RFI's, whatever, in papers, and how much is actually, you know, talked, you know, how much is directly sent to people that you trust? Does that happen? I mean, or do we rely only on a, you know, a one-way method of communication? That is, if you see it and are happy, and, you know, lucky enough to see it on the day that the newspaper publishes it or, you know, the day that it's on the website?
We send it to.
You proactively send it out?
Yeah, we proactively send it to people we know who can do the work and people who have expressed interest. We basically put it on the website and publish it, just to satisfy legal record.
So do you ever change it after you talk to these people? And say, "Hey, I've got this project coming up, here's what we're thinking." I mean, can a lot of that be done over the phone and just, and those people say, "Well, why do you need this component? Why can't you just, you know, have you thought of?"
Not on a complex matter like building a sewer plant or something like that. You can't. It's too complicated, there's too many steps, there's too many approaches that are viable.
But you still like the QBS plus low bid?
Like is not necessarily the proper word, Councilman. I would tell you that in today's world of dollars being spent, that price is going to be a consideration for any governing body. One way or the other, the price is going to be a consideration. One way of doing it is strictly QBS negotiation. It's close to what we believe is a fair price. We've got enough experience to say, "This is a pretty good value." Another is to have a small price component that's not going to necessarily knock somebody out of the blocks that's got a really good proposal. It might be a little bit more costly than the next proposal, but it's going to be a consideration, and it gives us a little bit of a basis to make some comparisons. So I'm comfortable with what staff is proposing on a strictly qualified basis. But if the reality of it is that the council would like to have some consideration of price, we can construct a purchasing policy, a hybrid of sorts, that takes all those things into account that the council might be concerned about, that gets us where we need to be, which is getting the best solutions to the issues that we propose and being able to come within a reasonable range of pricing that doesn't leave us to believe that we should have gone in a different direction and saved a whole bunch of money. So price is going to be an issue sooner or later with the governing body. You're going to want to know how much we're going to have to spend to get something done. That's a reasonable, appropriate question. We address it at the county by putting a little bit of that in upfront. It was very minor. Most of the firms we talked to said, "That's the last thing we do." We rank all the firms and rank all the proposals prior to opening envelopes, and if you're not a ranked firm that we think is qualified, we don't even open that price envelope. It gets sent back to the firm unopened. We're not interested. Your scope of services, your approach to our problem is not what we're interested in doing. So it allows it in for conversation and comparison. It's not an overwhelming issue. It should be a consideration, because at the end of the day, it will be a consideration for the governing body. We felt that that worked reasonably well in most situations for the county. Doing it on a pure qualification basis with the ability to negotiate, it's a little bit purer. Sooner or later, we have to get to the dollar question.
And when you say negotiate the price, what do you, what are you doing? You're going back and comparing the bid from the other, the other guy?
Let's get the language right. It's not a bid, okay? A bid is something, if you've got a specification and you know exactly, and everybody else knows exactly what you want, then it's a bid. Otherwise, it's a proposal of some sort, a request for qualifications or a request for information or a request for proposal. But it's not a bid.
How much impact does the difference in scale between the county asking for a qualification plus bid?
Qualification plus price.
Or qualification plus price compared to the City of Gardner asking for qualification plus price? And from my perspective, a firm would be more inclined to go with, entertain the county's notion because the amount of work is much greater that can be provided than the amount of work that can be provided by a city. Similarly, in a state level, the amount, the sheer amount of work is that much greater. So if they don't participate as a firm, then the opportunity for those jobs just
diminishes.
Diminishes. And, you know, the, you know, the point I think that's been said and is real is that the work done at design is far, far less expensive than the work done after construction or changing during construction. You know, it's in order of 10 times the cost. The dollar spent The dollar spent in design is going, is going to save you $10.
And it reduces the number of change orders and additional costs that come through that. Because when you do it the other way, like you said, there's usually change orders that come in. And then you say, "Gee, really? Another change order?" And you look at it and say, "Well, we have no choice. We have to go with that change order because they hit rock, or they did something that during the scope and design was not evaluated." So you're absolutely correct.
Let me ask a real simple question of both Dave and Tim. Since 2007, going to mostly a QBS process, do you think that we've gotten better solutions than what we got before as a city?
At different projects. Since 2007 is when we started doing these master plans.
Right.
Which, once again, I think were very difficult to scope. We had some good solutions before. I think with regard to the recent, or contract for the treatment plant, I don't know if we would have gotten, because how would, the fellow that ultimately was given the job, how would have even submitted a price for something that he wasn't even recommending doing?
Right.
I think with regard to the sewer with HDR, I think it was a pure process. It opened it up because trying to get from White Drive, basically by the Pizza Hut, to where we wanted to go, there's numerous routes, numerous methods. You know, it'd be very difficult to come up with a finite scope, because you're not even sure what method you're going to be dealing with. So I think, I think, yes, I think we had very fine solutions. We had some good projects before, but most of those were a little easier. One of them was a street project from here to here. And the prices varied from $25,000 to $90,000. I think we ended up going at 63. One was a list station that was, "Replace this list station and get it to here." Interesting enough, get it to White Drive. The prices ranged from, I think, 63 to 120. We went with 93.
What actions do we need to take to move forward, I guess? I mean, at what point do we move forward?
Are you looking for what?
Well, I think your direction on preparing for your consideration, a purchasing policy.
That includes this...
Yes. Isn't that what you're really asking for?
It's just, and actually, the way the policy's written, it's flexible enough, we could...
Do it.
Do it. It's just, we just come back and say, "Here's how we'll do it." But, you know, the, basically, the way the policy reads, which I think is quoted in the memo, just talks about consideration, it includes, yeah, costs, you can consider that, qualifications, you can consider that. It does fall under professional services. As I say, our recommendation is to downplay cost, if not, you know, if not consider it at all until you get into it. But as Mr. Press said, it is the reality. But I think, you know, on the scales, you know, these are all fairly small projects for what we do. And the biggest contract we've had out there's been a half a million. Larger the contract, the more people are willing to invest getting into it.
The question, I think, needs to be answered is, is council comfortable making a decision based on qualification? Or does price have to be a component of it? And the discussion came up, because after we went through a couple of these, there was a lot of heartache involved in not having, you know, we kept having this discussion about, "Well, what's the price? When we have the price, we have to know the price if we're going to make a decision. When we don't have the price, because the process doesn't ask for the price. Well, I can't make a decision if I don't have the price, dah dah dah." You know, so we had this whole who's on first issue going on. And, you know, it's simply a question of policy. Are we willing to make assessments based on qualifications and analysis of their qualifications, and go with the recommendation because of that analysis? Or...
And a negotiated price.
And a negotiated price. Or, you know, what, you know, does price have to, you know, do we have to have that price component in there? You know, if you listen to folks that have done this, you know, the answer is, "Well, you know, price really doesn't matter that much when it comes to design." So, that's it. And that's the direction we need.
I'm not, I'm not sure that there can't be some kind of staggered approach to it.
And that's what I meant when I said a hybrid approach.
Yeah.
There are ways to work within the parameters that we have now, to where we can really look at, we're really focused on the quality of the firm, their project approach to what we're asking to be done. And here's our top firm. And then we're going to go negotiate. And if that price is within our, you know, estimation, we think it's a fair and reasonable price, we present that to you and say, "Here's the best qualified firm. Here's their price. We think it's reasonable." If you were to ask the question, "What did the other firm propose in the way of price?" We won't be able to answer that question. And that's what you have to be able to decide. Is it okay to be able to go? And again, these things are going to be within a few percentage points one way or the other, because these people are in business for the long haul. So we're not going to get raked over the coals, if you will. That's just not realistic.
I think we make our determination of where we feel comfortable with the price is when we approve the budget. I mean, these things are budgeted years in advance, and they put out a budget number. And that's when, when we really give us the input of where we're comfortable with the price. And then, to me, then it's their job to come in, in that price. How they do it, really up to them, as far as I'm concerned.
Just, just so I understand, what, what is the harm in saying, "Here's the RFP. Here's, here's the, we want a solution." And having those, those solutions come to you? Because really, that's what the Q really stands for, is not qualifications, but solution. Right? I mean, isn't that what you're really saying, who's got the best solutions? I mean, the qual, you can have the least qualified guy come with the best solution, and the qualifications don't really enter into the picture.
Well, RFQ is different than an RFP, though.
Right. I know, but I'm asking, the RFP sets the parameters for providing, for having everyone come in at, at basically, you know, no, no expectation of price being conveyed, and saying, you know, "Here's the solution we would propose." You choose from the best solution, then you go right back out and you say, "Okay, here's the solution we want." Because you write the scope of work or the specs for that job. And then you get, then you have a sealed bid. I mean, isn't that QBS plus?
They will, they will never do business with you again, sir. I'm afraid that if you think about the time and money, those firms invest on the perchance that they might get the business. And then what they figure out is, your method is to do that, and then spec it and go out to bid, they will never propose to you again. Because they are investing their time, and their money, and their resources for a viable opportunity to provide that service to you. And if that's not how it's going to play out, firms won't do business with you anymore.
Well, then how, how do you propose that a QBS plus price work, then, if that's the case? Because don't they face that same risk under those, under that scenario?
But it's a much smaller issue for them to deal with than...
How so? I guess I don't understand.
They know that their pricing is going to be within certain parameters of probably every other professional firm that provides that material. And they have a fair and equal chance of getting their business.
Plus, it's typically with that methodology, it's just a shortlisted firm. So you may start off with 15 firms, but it's now down to three. So not everybody's out there speculating. But I think, as Mr. Press said, I think we were talking this afternoon, let's say you got a $50,000 contract. That's basically the estimate, fee estimate. What did you guys figure, usually $5,000 to put together a proposal?
We could easily spend five, $10,000 on putting a proposal together. And if you're making, you know, 10,000, you know, 10% profit on a project, you see it's, it becomes very, very quickly, yeah. It's like, okay, we gain breakeven, why are we responding?
Direction.
I guess from my perspective, I'll be honest, when I first read through this, I was leaning to where I think other people are, in that I didn't understand why we couldn't bid. But I do, I get it. I mean, I get the importance of that upfront conversation. I get the importance of being able to correspond with who you believe is the best, to develop a solution that's the best. I also get the fact that, I mean, we've experienced this, where vendors will leave and not participate because of certain practices. So I will say, I feel 100% strongly about it, not being able to get sealed bids. But I am absolutely fine with you all. I believe that you will make the best decisions, based on your professional experience.
I'm in favor of the QBS.
I too am in favor of the QBS.
I think it needs to be, the price needs to be in there as a component. So I guess I'm in favor of what Mike Press did with Johnson County.
I'm in favor with what Mike did at Johnson County as well. And I'd really, Brian, I know that in your professional position, that you've got to procure services sometimes.
Yes.
And Christie, I'm sure that you've probably had to procure services sometimes. And certainly, you have a way that you make sure that the vendors that you're talking to are qualified. But then you, certainly, probably have to...
Just like I said, they are, they are having, in pretty much in their, in their minds from people that they've worked with, six or seven qualified contractors to work with. And those are the ones that you, that you would work with. And then you would talk to them, do the interview process, to figure out, say, "Okay, this is what I want done. How do I do it?" And then each one of them gives you that. And then, once you figure out the best way that you feel the most comfortable with, then that's the one that you choose and negotiate the price with. Now, how do I know the price? Because I have my budget.
Okay. On the flip side, we've got guests here that are from Jacksonville, Florida. I used to live in Jacksonville. Okay. Say, Reynolds Smith &amp; Hill Engineering Services Firm in Jacksonville decides to open up a Kansas City ranch. Well, they're not one of the six companies that these nice men are used to dealing with. But maybe they're eminently qualified. You know, how do you get them involved in that process without there being some kind of opportunity for them to, to get in, not just on qualifications, but, you know, for people...
By the RFP notice, it's on the website.
Just a moment.
Answer your question.
Yeah. Because in some cases, people that, people that are working with an engineering services firm, they, a new one moves to town. They might be a national company. They just haven't been here before. Say they move to town. They might give us an exceptional price, have exceptional qualifications, put themselves in a position for us to contact them future. You know, this is a competitive marketplace that we're living in. You know, my wife's in the construction business. And they bid on stuff all the time. And they're, they're almost never the low bidder. But, but you know what? People are looking for work. I mean, not just people like me that need a job, but people that have companies and have services to offer, they're looking for work. I mean, and that is the realities of, of, you know, the 21st century, 2012.
And to answer that question, those, those type of people are the ones that actually pay people to scour websites of entities just like this, looking for RFPs to put out money to them.
I think, I have a feeling, it sounds like some might be downgrading the importance of cost, even in the QBS process. Price is always an overriding issue when it comes down to it. Now, we're going to use our ideas, but at the end of the day, we're going to have their cost, and we'll be able to make a judgment based on those costs, negotiate within those costs, to make sure the city is best served by that. So although it may not be written that a 10-point weighted system is part of the big procurement process, the cost isn't going to be completely disregarded. I mean, that's safe to say.
I guess that was probably the point that you articulated far better than I. Price is going to be a consideration somewhere through, in the process. We believe we can bring you that negotiated price that we believe is fair and reasonable, and is the right approach to the project. And we feel that we have the expertise on staff to be able to do that.
And that's why we pay our staff members to give us those recommendations.
And as was discussed earlier in the discussion, you know, if, let's say we've got the number one firm, we're talking to them, and they're coming in here. And we say, "No, we can't do it. Is there any way?" Then we're going to move on, and say, "Thanks, but no thanks."
That's...
The process, the, everybody knows the process. You go to number two.
Right. You still have the same...
Because you kind of say, "This is, this is my, this is the project. I like your, your, your idea. Okay, you can now tell me it's $3.25 million. Sorry, my, my budget's only $2.5 million." And that's where the negotiation comes in.
That's, that's correct. And if you can't reach negotiation...
And if you can't, then we go with the number two, with idea number two.
Proposer number...
Idea number two.
We never lose the power of the word "no" in any step of the process.
Exactly. And we never lose the upper hand in the negotiation, because we are the customer.
Well, the consensus is that we go with the QBS. I guess the fact that it's a 3-2 consensus would suggest that we use it only in those circumstances, when it's clearly the right approach.
Sure.
And that, and that, you know, that the, the aspect of price does...
Exactly. To your point, they, this isn't going to be something that they use on every project. These are going to be clearly defined projects, to where the, the goal is the end process.
These are going to be things that are big enough and complex enough that we can't put it on a bid.
On a bid you seek yourself.
And, and I will tell you that, that if you allow us to go forward with this QBS method, and you're not pleased with the results that we present to you, then we can pull back and do something different. We always have that option to say, "This hasn't worked as well as we had hoped or had thought." I don't think that's going to be the case, because this is what is used in the industry. But if you're not comfortable with, with it, then we can always go back and do it a little bit differently. But we can stay flexible with that.
Three staffers, at least on the engineering side, I mean, Jim, Tim, and I are the ones that be doing it. We're all here. Jim's still here. Yes, he is.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our final item this evening, very patient Mr. Walt Bussells, is here from Jacksonville, as press indicated, to talk about public-private partnerships. Obviously, we have had some discussion, and there's some information that comes back and forth. Some say they're good ideas, some say they're not good ideas, they're, you know, not good for the public, they are good for the public, and so on. But I think getting an understanding of what they are and what they are not is very, very helpful. And Walt, welcome.
Well, thank you, sir.
My apologies for not being here to greet you, but...
Great to be here. Thanks for asking me, asking us up. It's great to see Councilman Mora, who lived in my hometown for almost 20 years, when I was actually the CEO guy at the JEA, our municipally-owned electric, water, sewer utility there. What I want to do in about 20 minutes is tell you a little bit about our institute. I'm one of the co-founders. My colleague Taylor Smith is here with me as well, from Jacksonville. We have national advisory councils, and academics, and think tank people, and expert practitioners around the country who are interested in this subject. I'll tell you about why we formed the institute, what we're doing, talk about public-private partnerships. And I'm going to use the shorthand P3, rather than all those syllables. Talk about P3s. And talk about specifically municipal, electric, water, and sewer utilities. There are P3s across the full range of public services. But I'm going to focus just on electric, water, and sewer utility P3s. Give you two quick case studies, sort of the highlights and the results and lessons learned. One at Jacksonville, when I was at our municipally-owned utility there, when we took over our cities at the time, Broken Water and Sewer Utilities, and integrated them into our existing municipal electric utility, and what we learned and the results we got. I'll talk about a very recent integration, which just began last year in Indianapolis, Indiana, where Citizens Energy, which is actually a charitable trust, it's very interesting. It's a charitable trust founded by the Lilly family in the 19th century. So it's, it's like, like the public sector, it's just a trust for Marion County, Indiana. Actually, wrote a check to the city of Indianapolis to... wrote a check to the city of Indianapolis to buy, so to speak, their water sewer utilities, and are now in the process of integrating those three utilities into a single integrated model, like others around the country have done. I was actually a consultant to the CEO and executive team there in 2010 and early 2011, as they were considering doing this and put it together. Talk about what I think the evidence shows that would be of interest to you here in Gardner as you consider some of these possibilities going forward. And then open it up to questions, if that would be, that'd be good. So GSPI, Government Services Partnership Institute, a number of us founded this. We have over a hundred years collective experience in P3s and public services. Headquartered in Jacksonville with a national platform. There's been rapid growth in the use of P3s around the US over the last several decades and it's been accelerating in recent years for a variety of reasons. And the purpose of GSPI is to form a nonpartisan, independent, objective, clearinghouse and platform for information on best practices. And to be a service to the public sector in considering options they have and depending on the choices the public sector makes, provide educational services for public sector staff on how to actually implement some of these different methods of public services delivery. And we're getting a terrific response, by the way, around the country, so it's, we're on to something. P3s, common issues. I have a CPA financial background. Even though I ran a utility, I could not engineer, build or operate something if my life depended on it. So I'm a finance person, I'm a CPA, so I was the finance person. And when you think about municipal utilities and think about the use of P3s to deliver public services, I suggest you focus on total cost, not any individual single component. And so, for example, the cost of capital between private capital and say tax-exempt debt for the city of Gardner is different. But that's only a single part and in many ways, a relatively frankly modest part of the total cost. The total capital cost to deliver the infrastructure, the operating cost, lifecycle cost, who assumes the risk of budget, schedule and performance, all those things? The total cost, I would suggest to you, is the right area of focus. And then risk management. Which party in a P3, the private or public, takes the risk of a bust on schedule, a failure on budget, operating results that are less than were desired or expected when it was first contracted? Where do those risks fall out between the public and private partner? In our experience, and we think the evidence from the last several decades across the country shows, that P3s are the best option when a project is something that is not commonly regularly done by the public sector entity. So something that you might just do every few years or every few decades, something that has a lot of complexity, something that has a lot of technological innovation over time that the staff is not expert at, that's often a good candidate for a P3. How much risk is there in the execution? And who is best equipped to take that risk on? The taxpayer, the public sector or a private company that's expert at it? And frankly, in the times we live in since 2008, with enormous budget pressure on public sector organizations around the country, given the limited financial capacity of state and local government, where does that available public sector capacity, where can it best be invested for the benefit of the community? And where might private capital come in, come into play? Today, for a variety of reasons I believe we're all aware of, the availability of private capital for investment in P3s is extraordinarily high. And the cost, on a relative basis, is frankly extraordinarily low compared to the last fifty years. So the capital and the interest is there for a variety of reasons, these last four years in particular. I'm going to focus on municipal utilities because I think that's the area of interest to you. Over eighty percent of Americans are served by municipally-owned water and sewer utilities. Only fifteen percent of Americans are served by municipally-owned electric utilities. And so your city, like my hometown in Jacksonville, has all three. I think that sets up well for some opportunities for you to deliver those services in perhaps in different ways that are already proven in other parts, other cities of the parts of the country, that could produce some significant cost savings for you and improve services. Today, there's over seventeen hundred municipal water and sewer utilities who are using P3s for the entire utility or some significant part of it. That is to say, they're using private sector companies to operate, maintain a major wastewater plant, to operate, maintain an entire utility, in increasing cases, to actually finance, design and build infrastructure for those. And the number is growing. As those long-term contracts come of renewal, typically about ninety percent are extended by the decision makers, the elected officials and senior staff, because they continue to believe it's a superior method to deliver those services. And a small percent are not going forward. The two case studies I'm going to go through briefly happen to be large municipal utilities. The JEA in Jacksonville is a two billion dollar a year, serves a thousand square miles, it's a pretty big one. Indianapolis, Indiana, it's a pretty big utility. And so many of the lessons and results there, I think, are relevant to you. But there are some things, because of the size differential, that we would suggest you consider. Some of the techniques with P3s and integration of utilities that I did at JEA back in the nineties, that Indianapolis is doing today, I think, could not work for Gardner because of your size. And so there would be some things I think you should consider with P3s going forward. Inevitably, the talk of P3s affects public sector employees. That was true in Jacksonville in the nineties, it's true in Indianapolis today. And unlike some areas of public service for municipal utilities frankly, pay, benefits for a private sector company doing those services, or a city or county employee doing those services are very comparable. Frankly, often the private sector pays more for a Class A water plant operator, or a journeyman lineman or troubleshooter or something. And so some of those issues with compensation and pay for the public sector employees frankly have not come into play very much for municipal utilities. Not true in other areas, but fortunately, that's not much of an issue here. At JEA in Jacksonville, back in the eighties, we did a two billion dollar P3 for a power plant with a private company, it's the first one in the country's history. I was the CFO then. We're in the thirty-first year of a forty-year term. It's worked great. Are there problems and hiccup? Sure. But compared to doing it ourself, as we had done in the past, saved hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars and much higher levels of performance. Our partner was a very large, larger than us, private utility. And the truth is, I hate to say this, they were much better than us at a lot of things we thought we were pretty good at. And so bringing in some of those more advanced specialized capabilities from the private sector for our customers' benefits was a good thing. So we've used P3s a lot in Jacksonville. Always, the best results is, there's no question, elected officials and appointed officials retain without question policy setting where P3s are used and retain governance, oversight and administrative control. So the manner in which public services are financed and delivered can involve more public sector expertise and capability. But always, the local officials set policy and control governance. And we would suggest you consider those things as you consider some of your options. So since 1895, there's been a municipal electric utility in Jacksonville, Florida. It was spun off as an independent authority when we consolidated our city and county in Jacksonville in 1967. Had a lot of successes with P3s and different things we did. And in 1997, it's a long story, but our city's water and sewer systems had been under-invested in for a long time, had some significant environmental compliance and other issues, and we were growing. And the city, city council, the mayor, said, we're going to send the water and sewer utilities to the electric utility, and we're going to hold you accountable to put them together, to integrate them in a way that takes a lot of cost out. And so we set about doing that with very good results, and I'll share some of those results with you. We can show that by putting the three utilities together...